I would just like to have a moment of silence in memory of Kent Hager, who served 20 years as city administrator of New London. And funeral was yesterday, so.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands.
Okay, the first item we have tonight is the adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next, we have the approval of the September 10th 2019 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the September 10th 2019 council minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next, we have authorization to pay bills, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Will we pay bills in amount of $1,675,627.63?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to pay bills in the amount of $1,675,627.63. Are there any questions on the bills tonight? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried. Next, we have public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council tonight on any issue? If not, we'll move right along to standing in special committees. First of all, Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works met on September 30th, 2019. Meeting was called to order at 4:31. First item was wastewater treatment plant update. There were no questions or concerns on the monthly report. The next item brought up was consider purchase of a sewer camera. A proposal was prescribed to purchase a new sewer camera and tablet for use in televising sewers. The new technology allows for quicker deployment, live viewing of the televising, and the ability to identify the distance of an issue in the pipe. The total cost of this is $17,900. Would be purchased with the funds raised from the GLK Foods hauling high-strength waste to the wastewater treatment plant. Motion was made and seconded to purchase the camera from McCoy Equipment. The next item was to review additional costs for the wastewater treatment facility digester project and consider granting authorization to the Director of Public Works to approve specified change orders. The Board reviewed several pending change orders for the digester upgrade project. Some of the issues include additional work needed for concrete repair, which the contractor is finding as they remove old paint. The Board discussed the need to approve these type of change orders right away as they are found to keep the project moving and to grant staff authority to approve these changes. This is made and seconded to approve this. This will be brought to project tonight, to council tonight. The next item was to review the 2020 capital project and equipment items. The Board reviewed a report itemizing the draft 2020 capital projects and equipment schedule. No motion or changes were made at this time. The next was to discuss upcoming street priorities and project lists. A discussion was held regarding an updated list of the upcoming street improvements priority. No motion was made at this time. The next item was to discuss biannual PESR rating processes. Per state law, municipalities are required to evaluate and rank all roads on odd-numbered years. This rating process involves driving over each street in the city and evaluating them. Staff plans on completing this process in late October. No motion was necessary. In the Director's Report, years of service, Dale Wagner, street operator, has completed 41 years of service on September 11th. Other matters, none identified. Next month's agenda item, discussion of ATV/UTV routes in the city of New London and look at Genie Street draining. No further business. A motion was made and seconded to adjourn the meeting at 5:58. I move to review additional costs in treatment facility projects and consider granting authorization to the Director of Public Works to approve specified change orders. These change orders are not to exceed more than $157,300. This is what remains in the remaining account that we have already approved this budget for. This will allow us to get things done and not have to have special meetings and maybe wait two, three weeks, and then all of a sudden we're way behind projects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the Director of Public Services to approve additional change orders in the amount not to exceed $157,300, which is equal to the remaining contingency budget. Is there any discussion on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And that is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Next, we move to finance and personnel, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, October 2nd at 4:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Rich Paul Vermaeker of Ministry reviewed a 2017 billing. He explained they had to change employees responsible for the project involving the upgrade at our city pool. He apologized for the delay. They discovered the billing as part of an audit. The city will look into payment arrangements. A motion was made by Zog and seconded by O'Connell to recommend a council denial of two claims. Carried 9-0. The July 20th storm damage estimated costs were reviewed. These costs include the FEMA portion that was submitted to Opaca County, the utility insurance claim portion, and the city insurance claim portion. This is a fluid process as both the city and the utility continue to update the costs to be reimbursed by FEMA and the insurance company. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Fache to recommend a council approval of the refunds related to certain overpayments ordinance. Motion carried 9-0. The purpose of the ordinance is to discontinue the processing of mailed overpayments of $3 or less. The taxpayer would still have the opportunity to request the refund in person at City Hall. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Zog to recommend this council approval of the contract with MSB for credit debit and e-check payment for tax collection. Motion carried 9-0. Finance Director Ratke reviewed the July financial reports. Administrator's report and Finance Director's reports were discussed. The committee next went into closed session to discuss personnel matters. No action was taken as a result of the closed session. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:42 p.m. The next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be held in the council chambers on November 6th at 4:30 p.m. Next, I move we deny the two claims.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to deny the two claims against the city. Is there any discussion on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
I move we approve the ordinance for refunds relating to certain overpayments.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the ordinance for refunds relating to certain overpayments. This is the first reading. Is there any questions or comments on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
I move we approve a contract with MSB for credit debit and e-checks for tax collection.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with MSB for credit debit and e-checks for tax collection. Is there any comments on that item?
I'd just like to note that this should be very convenient for our citizens and there's no cost to the city for this. And I'd like to thank all the staff that put the work into getting this going.
Right.
Good point, John.
Okay, good point, John. Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
And I move we approve the license list for October as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the license list as presented. Is there any comments on that item? Please, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have for finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Next, we move to park and recreation, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The October Park and Rec meeting met on October 1st on Tuesday at 4:30. Meeting was called to order at 4:33. Alderman Herter moved to approve the agenda, seconded by Alderman Pinch. Motion carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none present. Review and discuss the 2020 capital projects and equipment items. Chad Harth presented and led the discussion on the draft, the 2020 department capital projects and equipment list. No motion was made on these items at this time. Update on the tree inventory project. The city's last tree inventory evaluation was completed in 2006. The Wisconsin DNR recommends that tree inventories be updated every five years. The city has applied for urban forestry grants to aid in the cost of the citywide evaluation, but unfortunately have not been awarded any funding as DNR priorities recently have been focused on Emerald Ashport-related activities. Chad Harth stated that instead of trying to complete one large citywide evaluation every five to 10 years, that he has planned on separating the city into zones and completing smaller evaluations each year. The city is working with Ranger Services and McMahon Associates to configure the city's GIS system to collect the evaluation data when in the field. No motion was made on this item. Director's report, Mike Frieder, city senior transit driver, completed 10 years of service of the city on September 21st. Patrick Guyatt, park caretaker, completed five years of service of the city on September 22nd. Chairman's report, there's none identified. Committee members' report, there's none identified. Next month's agenda items are none identified. Looking, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:19. Looking for approval of the draft of the 2020 park and rec fee schedule.
Second.
That's a motion, I take it.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the draft of the 2020 park and recreation fee schedule. Is there any comments on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Next, we move to Planning Commission, Mr. Steinhorst.
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission met on September 26th, called to order at 5:00 p.m. Agenda was adopted, and those in attendance, Galar, Gabert, Noel, Hanky, and Steinhorst. We had approval of the July 25th, 2019 Planning Commission minutes. Motion was made and seconded to accept those as printed, and that was carried 4-0. Mr. Hanky then explained that it was necessary that two properties that were annexed into the city in 1999 were never properly zoned. They are at 811 Spur Road and 2104 North Shawno Street. Motion was made and seconded to recommend the ordinance zoning 811 Spur Road to R2. That motion carried 5-0. Motion was then made to recommend for an ordinance zoning 2104 North Shawno Street to B2. That motion also carried 5-0. The Romanesco Development has requested that the London Acres subdivision be zoned as R2. Motion was made and seconded to recommend the ordinance zoning London Acres subdivision R2, and that was carried 5-0. There was then a discussion on the vacation of State Street from North Water to the River. It has been suggested that the city vacates State Street from North Water to the Wolf River as the property is currently running through Veterans Memorial and Taft Park. This property would then be combined with the property that are west into a single lot designated Taft Park. During the discussion, it was brought up that St. John's Street may also extend to the river through St. John's Park, and this should be taken care of. Motion was made and seconded to have the Planning Commission recommend that both State Street and St. John's Street be vacated from North Water Street to the Wolf River, and utility easements be established with the vacated properties becoming part of their respective parks. That was carried 5-0. Our next meeting will be October 24th at 5:00 p.m., and the meeting adjourned at 5:22. I have three ordinances this evening, Your Honor. First of all, I would move to adopt an ordinance to zone property at 811 Spur Road to R2. This will be the first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of the ordinance zoning the property at 811 Spur Road to R2. Is there any discussion on that? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
I would move then that we approve the ordinance to zone the property at 2104 North Shawno Street to B2. B being business 2. First reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance rezoning or zoning the property at 2104 North Shawno Street to B2. Is there any discussion or question on that item? Please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion carried.
I would further move to pass an ordinance to zone the property at London Acres, that's the Romanesco property, to R2, residential 2. This is the first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance to zone the property at London Acres to R2. Again, this is the first reading of that ordinance. Tom.
Yeah, where is that piece of land?
That's the new Romanesco out west, just west of the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
Please cast your ballots.
That's all, our two, no.
All voting yes, motion carried.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, and just to go back a little, few minutes, suggesting vacating both State Street through Taft Park and St. John's Street through St. John's Park. We have found that state law says that if you vacate a street, you must give the property owner, you must evenly split it between the property owner on each side of the street, which means in St. John's Park case, the city would get the half of the street that we own, and the quilting shop would get the other half. In other words, the quilting shop would own part of the park. And there is a way to get around that, but it takes an extreme amount of paperwork and work to do. And Chad and I talked it over, and we thought, you know what? We're never going to put a bridge over there anyway, so let's just kind of leave it go at that. So I just thought I'd explain that to you. We have looked at that, but we are in the process of getting the certified survey map for the Taft Park area for State Street finished. So that'll be coming up the next council meeting, hopefully. Thank you, Mr. Steinhorst. Next, we move to Economic Development Committee, Mr. Morak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, September 24th at 4:30 p.m. in the city council chambers. The August 27th minutes were approved. The two consulting services agreement for 2020 were reviewed and discussed. The only reason, explained, the more aggressive of the two was for substantially more money than the one we have in place now. He also reminded the group of the new agreement with WEDA for the upcoming year and the hope to use that alone. Motion made by Zog, seconded by Steinhorst, to stay with the WEDA contract for 2020. Motion was carried by all. Ann Hunt spoke about the current motion efforts, riverfront development update efforts, and that Randy had been unable to participate at this time. Randy suggested proceeding with the library and housing portion for the time being and continuing with other phases of development moving forward. Next month, the agenda will include a RFP for a developer for the market-priced housing. The residential development update was discussed, will be discussed further in October. The committee was asked to review the goals in the packet and be prepared to discuss and revise next month. April updated the group on business changes and relocations. There are two North Water Street businesses that have been purchased and renovated to open up. 304 North Water Street will house innovative industrial staffing, and 209 North Water Street will be an office for an attorney. April also spoke about cap services having $1 million in low-interest capital at 4.25% fixed for seven years to support nonprofit-owned community facilities in rural communities across Wisconsin. This capital has a limited shelf life, so a prompt response is important. Under public comment, Jim Hoffman spoke in favor of having an ATV/UTV allowed to ride on city streets. Adam Dobert spoke about the same, as well as Alan Crabby and Jen Heinemann. The subject will be an October agenda item for the committee, as well as developing a committee for recreational development of motorsports. And the meeting adjourned at 5:45 p.m. I just want to mention that the mayor has requested that because of safety concerns on public roads and other concerns, that the issue refers, be referred to Public Works Committee instead of Economic Development for further discussion. Right?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and it will be on the next Public Works Agenda, which is the first Monday of November. And I don't want to pull out my cellphone right now and try and look up the date, but that's scheduled, the 4th? 4th of November.
Okay.
Okay.
You also have a copy of the WCEDC report for September in your packet. And that's all I have for Economic Development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Okay, you've got the minutes and reports from the Housing Authority, Library and Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Utility Commission, Cemetery Superintendent, and Building Inspector. Is there any questions or comments on those reports? If not, we will go to reports of officers. And I have a proclamation to read very happily. This is honoring Bud Stern for exemplary service. To all those present, let it be known that Bud Stern, a dedicated friend to the community, began his service to the city of New London in 1947, is a fireman for the New London Fire Department from 1947 until 1967, during which time he rose to the rank of captain. And whereas Bud Stern started life in 1819, born on November 3rd in the town of Little Wolf, he graduated from Washington High School in 1938 and went to the Alexian Brothers Hospital School of Nursing in St. Louis that fall. He graduated in 1941. Bud then went to work at Boulder Dam as an industrial nurse. Whereas after December 7th, 1941 bombing of Pearl Harbor, Bud returned home to enlist in the service. However, he was originally unable to enlist due to his eyesight. He instead worked at Four Wheel Drive Corporation in Clintonville before eventually being drafted in the fall of 1942. Bud served as a surgical nurse in the Army in the European Theater of World War II. And whereas Bud met and courted his future wife Catherine McNichols while he was receiving his military training, they married before Bud went overseas. After returning to New London in 1945 following the war, Bud worked at Quality Markets and became owner of the store in 1967. Bud and Catherine had two children, Mike and Mary, and he is a grandfather of four and great-grandfather of six. Whereas Bud was an active member of the Knights of Columbus Fourth Degree and has held state offices with the organization. He also served as treasurer for Most Precious Blood Catholic Church for many decades. Bud is also a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for the city of New London and is the current chairman. I, as mayor of the city of New London, do recognize Bud Stern on his 100th birthday and his many contributions to the city of New London with a hearty thank you for his exemplary service to our community. And if any of you get a chance to see Bud during the next month, wish him a happy birthday, and I hope you've got time to sit down and listen to some of the stories about New London of yesteryear. Absolutely fascinating. So, thank you. That's all I have tonight. Next, we go to City Administrator, Mr. Leoni.
Thank you, Your Honor. First thing, with the unexpected passing of Kent Hager, I would like to ask the council to consider donating a tree, putting a tree up in honor of Kent's long service to the city. This would be in Riverside Park.
Yes.
Yes, and would carry a gold plaque. This is an honor that's only been given out once before, that I know of, to a council member that had been here for several years. So I'm asking the council if that would be a fitting tribute to Kent's service.
I see heads nodding, yes.
Yes. Next up, just to bring everyone up to speed, on the wheel tax video that was posted, we had 677 views, which is now the highest amount of views ever for the city of New London. That number two would be the 2009 Felberg Veterans Ride Departure at 188 views and the April 2019 council meeting at 35 views. So it has gotten quite a few views. We've shared it on all of the city's Facebook pages, and it's been passed around. There's actually been some good comments and, of course, some bad comments on it, and I hope to have another version coming out, a sequel to answer those questions and as well as provide some more information. Next up, this just came in, which is the banquet, the annual banquet for the Chamber of Commerce. So I'm asking council members to consider going to that and to let me know. The date for that is November 14th. Dinner, let's see, dinner is at 6:30. It'll be here at the Crystal Falls Banquet Hall. Let's see. There's also, we've also set a training. This is ICS 100 and 700. And when it comes to FEMA training, there is four basic classes, 100, 200, 700, and 800. 100 and 700 are small enough that we can get it within a three-hour session. So we've set up a session in January, three days, January 6th, 7th, and 9th, at 9 to 12, or 9 through noon here at the city hall, open to city staff. We're trying to get as many people trained under NIMS, and this will also help down the road to any other future incidents that might happen. 200 and 800, we are going, we're setting dates for later in January, early in February. Also, I sent an email around about ICS 402, which is a NIMS overview for senior officials, executives, elected, mid-level supervisor and up-type training. That, I was looking for November 12th, 13th, 14th, or 15th. I've got some options for times. If council members individually can respond back to me, so we can kind of set up a date. And this is, it's not required. And this is, it's not required, but it also helps as far as elected officials and management with what goes on during, during an actual disaster event. This is also, both the training, the ICS 402, the ICS 100, and the ICS 700 is all free to the city. The nice thing, too, is that we'll have certifications that will go in your personnel files. I've completed the first round of training for the ADA Title II Coordinator, and it's a lot. So I'll be slowly working that out. We're looking at a possible 10-year plan in order to bring the city completely up to Title II standards. The other thing is we introduced what's called an asphalt zipper. This is a possible solution to the roadway situation. We set up a demo, or we're setting up a demo in the spring, but the reps will be here October 17th. This goes along with the wheel tax video of trying to look for different ways to try to get as many roads done at the cheapest cost possible. And I apologize, I should have said this at the beginning, I apologize for the, our, I'm sorry, my administrative report not being in the packet. That was my fault, and that'll be corrected at the next, well, moving forward. We've reorganized the HR department, where anything that deals with personnel will, the HR coordinator will report to me. Anything that deals with payroll or expenses, that individual will report to the finance director. So that, that has been completed. We had the Highway 15 bypass meeting, both a public official, and there's already been the public one. If anybody has any questions, please get ahold of me. I've completed the levy limit class, and thanks to going in, I understand it better about, I understand a little bit better about the Wisconsin levy limits, and had an opportunity to talk to the instructors about some tips to improve our budget, even if we can just tweak it a little bit here, a little there, just to get as much work done under the taxes that we already pull. Last but not least, I met with some school officials, and we came up with some ideas to try to get the school system better involved with the, with the city administration. Some of the things that we talked about is proclamations for teams that have won, or individuals that have won titles. Also, to bring them here and have them recognized in front of city council. The other thing is to have a student council rep attend city council and potentially sit in one of the chairs. This way, we can also, council can also hear from the school, the students themselves. And last but not least, we're starting to roll out with internships and job shadowing program. We're still working out the details for that. So we're trying to get the community more involved. Other than that, I continue to reach out to members of the community, leaders in the community and the businesses, and find out from them what we can do to make everything better for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Utility Manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Honor. We were doing hydrant flushing. Last spring, we did this, and the river was even higher than it is right now. We actually cut it short. Now we're in the fall, with first thought in my mind, it'd have high river conditions again, but we are flushing, they're on schedule, actually slightly ahead. They should be wrapping that up easily by Thursday morning, getting that completed. The other big project that we've been working on is our southeast substation conversion there. We should have all that work done. We have a planned outage on, planned for October 27th with Tyson. We have two underground circuits we have to dig down, locate, phase in, put new elbows on, so we have that outage planned. That would complete that project except, except for teardown. So those are the major things that are going on. It is Public Power Week, and my commission is throwing a lunch for its employees tomorrow, so, what's going on with utilities?
Thank you. Next, we'll have our Chief of Police, Mr. Schleter.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let everyone know that if you call the police department after 6:00 PM at night, and we've had a few questions about this, it gets transferred over to Wapack County Sheriff's Department, and they dispatch for us. So don't be surprised if you call 982-8505, and it's answered by the Wapack County Sheriff's Department. Supply them with the same information that you need. They will dispatch our officers as normal. If you need to come to our office, there's a red phone that goes into lobby that will, all you gotta do is pick it up, you don't even have to dial anything, and that'll also go to the Sheriff's Department, and they'll dispatch our officers to wherever you need. So, I think a few people have called, they're kind of wondering why they got the Sheriff's Department, but that's the reason why, so, thank you much.
Okay, thank you. Next, our Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the Recreation Department, we'd like to invite everybody, you and your four-legged best friend, to the New London J.C.'s Dog Park for our annual Howl O'Ween Party, October 12th, from 10:00 AM to noon. There'll be doggy costume contest at 11:30, and the cost of the event is a donation to the Wapack A Humane Society, who will also be on hand to answer questions you may have about adopting a little monster of your own. All creatures four and two-legged will go home with a lot of treats and no tricks for that event. If you have any questions, you can call us at the office at 92-8521. On Friday, October 25th, we'll be hosting our annual haunted swim at the New London Aquatics and Fitness Center. That's from 1:15 to 3:15. Admission is $2 per person, and all kids will receive a goodie bag of treats after the swim. Also, on Friday, October 25th, for a one-night-only event, we'll be having our Antle, Annual Haunted Park, Haunted Trail. The trail is a short walk through the moonlit, a short walk through the moonlit trails with ghost goblins and ghouls of all types along the way. We'll be hosting the Trick or Treat Trail from 4:30 to 6, where volunteers will be handing out candy to youth 12 and under. And then from 6:45 to 8:45, the trail will become completely haunted with no treats, only tricks. Missions to the trail is $3 this year. On the public works side, the Fall 2019 Leaf and Brush Curbside Pickup will begin next Monday, October 14th. We ask that you please do not place anything in the curb yet and let New London Utilities complete the hydrant flush. We don't want to be flushing all those leaves and everything around, down the drains. So wait till this Saturday, then at that point, you can put your leaves into the curb, down below the curb. The brush goes on top of the curb between lengths of four to six feet, and please place it perpendicular to the curb so we can grab it by the ends. And then also, final reminder that per city ordinance and state law, all river rafts and docks need to be removed by the river by November 1st. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, we have our Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a service anniversary tonight, Ryan Benrowski, nine years, and that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have Phil.
Hi, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Phil Kossen with Ellers, and I have a handout if you want to pass that down. While you're handing those out, wanted to first start by saying that on behalf of Ellers and Ellers Incorporated and myself personally, I wanted to pass along our condolences for the passing of Kent Hager. I've worked with Kent for quite a while, 15-plus years, I would say about, and I found him always to be a very positive person, that supported us. He certainly had the best interests of the city always at heart, and I will miss him personally, so.
Thank you.
Did everybody get a copy of the document? What I wanted to do is spend a little bit of time talking through kind of where we're at on the, what I've termed kind of the library senior housing project on the river. And for those who haven't been part of the meetings, these have been going on now for quite a while, well over a year, and we lost a little bit of traction for a couple of reasons. One, the WEDA tax credit process is an annual process, and, and applications, you know, come, are essentially applied for at the end of a calendar year, and there was the decision not to apply last year, so the next go-around would be applying for this year of the tax credits, and then you don't hear back until April. So that was one decision point along the way by the developer that, that kind of moved this out a year then. I think everybody is maybe familiar, Randy Stadmiller was instrumental in putting together a design plan for the area, and Randy's also had some health issues. So we've tried to pick up the mantle again, and I know Lou has been championing, trying to move this, this project forward. We met a month and a half ago or so, about a month ago, as a larger group, and out of that meeting, Lou asked that I come and provide an update tonight for the council. I'm not asking you to prove anything tonight, this is informational, and I've tried to put it a little more into context for everyone so that people have a better feel for some of the financial realities as it pertains to this project. So, in, on the first page, I've tried to summarize kind of where we're at, estimated project costs, development scenarios that I considered are the next steps that I'm going to kind of walk through. There are supporting numbers behind this. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the supporting numbers. Not everybody's a numbers person like me, and sometimes running and, you know, just diving into spreadsheets doesn't help a lot. So I'm going to try to keep it kind of high level and talk about what I think are the important issues. So as I indicated in the current timeline, the WEDA funds, which is really the funding, significant funding for the senior housing development that would be on top of the library, that, the application is due in November 2019 awards and April of 2020. The city, I know, adopted a resolution supporting that application going in. I know Horizon Development is looking to proceed as well with that application, but that, that's a timeline that'll then push us all the way into next spring on the project. There is a myriad of other financing options that they are looking at, when I say they, I mean Horizon Development, that they're looking at as a way to fund the project as well. That funding cycle for some of those come towards the end of 2020. So not only do we wait on the WEDA application, hopefully the WEDA application gets funded in April, then that's the first piece. The second piece is then that you actually, the developer, Horizon, will be seeking out additional revenue sources as a way to fund, fund the project, and that could take you into fall of 2020. At the same time, if those proceed, on Item 3, the city will need to create a tax increment district, and that will end up being fall of 2020 as well. It'll be effective after September 30th of 2020, making it a 2021 tax increment district. That's important from the standpoint of just making sure we try to maximum, maximize a maximum number of years that we can collect revenue. This will be a, what will be termed as a Blight Rehab District. It'll have a 27-year maximum life, which is really going to be critical, because these are always tough projects to get done. So we would expect kind of the domino effect to be the WEDA tax credits announced in April, Horizon seeking other funding sources through spring, summer, and the fall of 2020, the city creating a tax increment district in 2020 at the same time, and all of that being wrapped up towards the end of 2020 so that they could be under construction in the spring of '21. So that's a timeline that's been laid out after our last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of understands this isn't a, a situation where we're going to be looking at doing something immediately. There is a process that they have to go through, the developer has to go through to get, to get funding. A little side note, I've worked with Horizon Development and other communities, they, they have met the obligations in each of those communities that I've worked with them on, and they do produce nice-looking facilities. So I think you have a very reputable firm, it's just a process that you have to go through and they have to go through. So that being said, what, what the initial ask, if you go to, on the second section is estimated project costs, and what we were able to, to work through at our meeting a month ago, is that for the WEDA housing development in the senior housing units located above the library, that's 34 senior housing units, and the six three-bedroom townhouses that will surround that library or, or be adjacent to the library, those 40 units, what they are looking for from the city is really $1.2 million in support. That has not changed from when these discussions occurred last year. They were looking for $1.2 million at that time as well. Along with that, they're looking at really the land being provided at no cost that they would be using for development. So that's what they're looking for from the city. The city also will need, my understanding, and just in some of these meetings, talking with people, is that there's some public infrastructure needed to support the development. I'm not going to sit here and act like I know what those are, because I don't, but there is some infrastructure needed. Ballpark that was being tossed about at one point was about a half a million dollars. That needs to be verified. I would like to see those number, actual numbers at some point so that we can model this a little bit better. I do feel, as does Dave Thiel, Wapack County Economic Development, that there are grant funds available that can offset a portion, if not all, of those costs. Again, that needs to be verified as we get further through the process, but I have accounted for, in this analysis, receipt of a grant of $250,000. Again, that was after some discussion with Dave Thiel from Wapack County. He's not promising that, but he feels pretty confident that a project like this, which is really a catalyst project for the downtown, could, could realize some grant funding. There's some, when you look at the grand scheme, some nominal costs to set up the, the tax increment district, there'll be a development agreement or two that'll have to be put in place. We've estimated those costs to be $35,000. Under Item 4 project costs, everything I've talked about at this point has really been to set up the TIF, public infrastructure needed to support the library and the senior housing townhouse development. What needs to be, again, verified, and, and there's significant work to be done, is Randy Stadmiller had put together a scenario for townhouse and condo development on that site, and he had, he had identified 12 condos and 32 townhomes, so the value of $9.7 million. Now, you know, I'm not sure if Randy's completely out of the picture or not, but there could be, with that secondary development, there could be another ask. I wouldn't be surprised if there was. Whoever, whatever developer you're working with could walk in the door and say, "We see a market here, but," and, and there could be an ask associated. I haven't factored any of that in here, okay? But there certainly could be an ask at some point. And then lastly, my understanding is that the library costs is $5 million with the expectation that $3.5 million will be coming from private donations. So that's kind of a project cost component to this that is substantial for the city. So proposed development, I just touched on these, you know, the only known at this point that's going to be applied for through the WEDA tax credit program is the 34 senior unit, senior housing units, and the six three-bedroom townhomes that are for, considered for larger families. That helps with the scoring for the WEDA program. So that's really kind of what is being proposed and brought forward by Horizon Development at this point. I referenced the study that was done and the plan that was laid out by Randy Stadmiller of the 12 condos and 32 townhomes at, you know, roughly $9.7 million. You know, that, that piece of this is the piece that I think is, as much as, probably the most critical piece, because that's the revenue. That's what's going to generate the revenue in the tax increment district, it's the market rate piece of development. And so you'll see in my next steps in a little bit, I talk a little bit about the need to kind of firm up or start talking with developers about that. Reason I say that is, you know, the WEDA project, projects are great, and we see them all over the state, and then we see them in tax increment districts a lot, but they are assessed based on income, rental income, as opposed to construction cost. Therefore, they may cost $6, $7 million to build, but the valuation may only end up being about $1,003. So that's, that's kind of the reality. kind of the reality, and that's, you know, when it comes to tax increment, in which we're looking to use to support all this, valuation means a lot. So, the market rate proposed development that comes from whoever is going to ultimately end up supporting, to some extent, the senior housing as well. I mean, that's just kind of the math behind how this will work. So, that's the proposed development, actual, number one. Two, which was proposed by Randy Stadmiller, that will need to be updated, verified. So, I ran two different scenarios. I talked to Lou a little bit after the meeting the other day, and I, I said, "Well, I want to give you the worst-case scenario option, and then I'm going to give you what I think the kind of break-even scenario is for the city." And so, scenario one, if you look at that, what I've assumed in this is that you get through the Horizon Development project, they get funded, the city commits the funding of $1,002,000 to the project, you put in the infrastructure needed to support the, the development, and nothing else comes. None of the market rate stuff comes. No condos, no townhomes, no apartments, nothing else on the site besides the 40-unit development that is being proposed by, by Horizon Development. And, you know, it's always a scary proposition when I show this, but, you know, you gotta kind of, you hope these are going to be working in, you know, at the same time, down the same path. May not be the same developers, but you want to have commitments on both the market rate and the WEDA stuff, if possible. So, what it means for the city, though, is that it would result in annual shortfalls of about $115,000 a year that would have to be levied for by the city and, and then paid for through the, the general tax levy. And that shortfall ends up being about $2 million over the life of the district when you add it all up. So, scenario one, which I call worst case, you only get the WEDA development, isn't necessarily a good, a good proposition for the city. You need other development, market rate-type housing to support it. So, scenario two, I, I backed into a number, and that's all I was attempting to do. I wanted to kind of, what does it take to make this work? Randy Stadmiller's proposal aside, $9.7 million, let's kind of ratchet that back and say, "What do you really need to make this thing work?" and close out with a positive increment over the life of the district. And so, the second scenario is just the WEDA housing project. And then, secondarily, I assume 16 condo slash townhomes at $225,000 per unit. And the result of that is that we have some annual shortfalls for a period of time. They get reimbursed back fully over the life of the district, and the district closes out two years early in the black. So, you need about an additional $3.6 million of development, along with the WEDA tax credit project, to make this work from a financial standpoint, over the life of the tax increment district. Now, I didn't assume all of that $3.6 million was going to come online right away. I, I showed that being built out over a four-year period. So, you know, I don't think the, the market is going to necessarily be here to have somebody build a lot of units and have them all, you know, sell right away. The market is hot, we get all that, but, you know, I want to make, build in a little bit of room in here that it's going to take a little time to build out. So, what I was really attempting to do more than anything else is try to give you a number that, that you can get your arms around. When you start talking with developers about market rate-type development, what is needed to be able to, to make this project work? Okay? Everybody follow that?
Mm-hmm.
So, I've identified the next steps, and the next steps are not real complicated. I've touched on them already. One, confirm public infrastructure costs and available grants. That, you know, the infrastructure piece, you should be able to do some of it in-house, I would expect, and then, you know, coordinate probably with Dave Thiel on the grant side to see what potentially could be out there. Again, my assumptions are just assumptions. $500,000 of cost, $250,000 coming from grants. That has to be confirmed. Number two is really the key to this, and I've said it actually at the meeting a month ago. I think the market rate housing piece of this is really critical, and there are, you know, Horizon Development was in the room with us that day. They have a different viewpoint of that site, maybe not the same viewpoint that the city would want to see, but there's certainly, certainly an option to talk about, you know, what level of interest they have in developing the market. I'm not sure the situation with, with Randy is. He certainly could be an option. There are some other developers that we can pass on names to Lou that you may want to talk to as well. I don't know what, maybe somebody local as well. But at some point, a, a market study will have to be done to determine what is truly marketable as far as housing in that area. And then, in the back of your mind, I hope you kind of keep that, you know, $3.5 to $4 million number out there, saying that's kind of barebone what we need to make this thing work, and, and to have the TIF actually cash flow. I put number three, funding the remaining library costs, and then, four, you know, the next step, I, I believe, Mayor, and I don't want to, I, I think there was, I know there was a, there was a resolution adopted a couple of months ago about a desire to create a tax increment, or commitment to create a tax increment district. That's probably one step. There's probably a second step that Scott from Horizon said that will be needed, and that would be a letter of support from the city up to a certain level of funding that would be needed for the application that would be submitted in November.
And that, that letter, when I talk to Scott, we can have a contingency in there. It's all conditioned on whether or not the WEDA tax credits are approved. So,
Yeah.
without the WEDA tax credits, the project is just too much.
Right. Yeah, and I've seen similar letters to that. In fact, the commitment is, the tax is the, the city commitment and the tax increment district are really contingent upon the tax credit money coming in.
And we should look at getting approval for that next month.
Exactly.
So, that was a lot to digest. I, questions of anybody on the council that...
You talked about shortfall.
I did.
Is that for real?
Those are for real.
Every year?
Well, under the scenario of WEDA only, those are real, and they are for the 20-year time period of the debt, that the debt would be taken up. Because you'd be issuing bonds for the $1.2 million commitment, and you'd have some infrastructure costs as well that you'd have to bear as part of that. The revenue coming from the WEDA project itself on an annual basis is only about $30,000. So, the difference between the revenue from the WEDA project and your obligation, given the commitments I talked about, that difference is about $115,000 a year. So, that, those are real. If you only get that development, that's why scenario two is, just telling you, you need the secondary development to make this work, the additional housing.
And that's why we've really got to work on scenario two.
You do.
And, and just to clarify that, when you mean the WEDA project, you actually mean just what we kind of considered phase one, which is just the library project, the, the two floors above,
Right.
and then the four buildings, the four townhomes, I believe they were.
It's six townhomes.
It's six, sorry, thank you. So, that, that's not the residential side. That's if we push the residential side off down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that, that's why I kind of, under next step, it's kind of bolded. It's that secondary piece that, that really, of development that really will drive this, the success of this, more than, more than the WEDA project. The WEDA project is nice. You get the library, the senior housing. It's a nice, a nice project for the downtown area, but it's the secondary residential that's really critical.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Steve?
Steve?
In the, in the phase two, Phil, if that doesn't get built on in four years, is it five or six-year buildup? How does that change going to the black? Will that still be black humans?
And I didn't have this, Steve, I didn't have the second, I didn't have anything starting until 2022 on the, on the market rate housing. So, I kind of pushed that back a little bit already, thinking that it's going to be a construction zone there for a little while, probably, if you're building the library and the senior housing. The longer it delays, the less increment it generates, and, and it becomes more difficult to absorb over that 27 years.
Still basing on a four-year buildup of all the infrastructure, or housing? That seems pretty quick to me.
16 units, maybe. I don't, I don't know. I don't know the market.
You know, you mentioned land at no cost. At what time do we have to give the land to developer? What does that mean, the land at no cost?
The land at no cost, I know for Horizon, the piece that they are, that they will be looking to include as part of their application, they, they will look at that as equity into the project, and that helps their funding as well. So, I know their requirement is that piece of it would be land at no cost. I don't know about the rest of the property, but that piece is what I'm referring to. And that wouldn't be transferred to them until a lot of steps down the road. You'd have to have the tit in place. You'd have to have a development agreement in place. There'd be a number of steps. So, that wouldn't occur probably until, under this timeline, 2021, maybe late 2020.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody? Phil, I want to thank you. You, every time you come, you have things laid out exactly, and make it understandable for, for those of us who are not in the financial industry, and I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, if there is no other business, I would look for a motion to go into closed session.
I just had one comment. I just wanted to thank Lou for, I speak for myself, and I'm sure for the rest of you all, to mention that on the wheel tax, because we've had tons of people asking us about the wheel tax. And I just want to thank you for putting that out for everybody to look.
Yes.
That's my comment.
Very well done, I think. Okay, would look for a motion to go into closed session.
So, moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go into closed session per 1985-1C to evaluate the city administrator and review goals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.